I call this meeting to order. Rock call please.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera. Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Thaddeus Acel de la Hoya. Councilmember Esteban Rosales. Councilmember Lizeth Servín. Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Present.
Mayor Nieves Raydown.
Present. Be noted that Councilmember Rosales just showed up.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you.
Item number two, items for discussion only. Item number two A, presentation followed by discussion and possible directions to staff on any and all matters regarding the proposed business licenses fees, Edgar Esparsa, Billing and Collections Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. Edgar Esparsa, Billing and Collections Manager. Today I will be giving you a quick presentation of our business license fees. Sonya, if you can please help me open up the PowerPoint. So during this presentation, I will be going over the new business license type, which is the cottage food operations. And I will be also presenting to you the proposed fee schedule along with the administration fees. Before I start, I want to give you a quick background on our business license fees. So the current business license fee schedule was adopted in 2005. It has not been amended since then. Also for business license application, building safety, if we are conducting inspections without charging a fee. And also there's not a current standard schedule as to how often to increase the fees. But the majority of the cities throughout the United States, they revise their fees every five years. And also the current license schedule does not have a type, business license type to address the cottage food operations. So to give you more information about the cottage food program, the state passed Bill HB 2042, which expanded the current list of food products that can be made and sold from homes. The only thing with this program is that the applicant must process, package, and label the products within their home kitchen. However, with this program, neither the state nor the county will inspect the applicant's kitchen. The state only recommends the applicants to follow their food safety guidance and cottage food program regulations to reduce the chance of spreading foodborne illness to their customers. The only things that are not allowed under this program are the items that have fish, shellfish, raw milk, alcohol beverages, and marijuana infused products. And this is a continuation. So the only requirements in the program is that the applicant must be registered with the state. They must have a food handler's card, and they must label all of their products. Here in the city, we have created a specific business license application for this type of program in which we will require them to provide the cottage food registration, ATPT, a list of food products, their food handling card, a sample product label, and their hours of operations. And all cottage food operation licenses must adhere to cities' home occupation and state regulations. And also the applicant will be liable if anyone gets sick due to consuming their food products. And also they will be able to submit a complaint to the state in which they will provide the vendor's information, and the state will initiate a process to investigate. And lastly, we will require the applicant to provide us access to our court enforcement officer to enter during hours of operations the premises. So that way we can ensure that the parts are being made inside the home kitchen. And now I will go ahead and proceed with the business license fee schedule. So this is the current license fee schedule that we have. And I have highlighted for you the licenses that are most common for us, which are retail and general business license, building contractors, professional services, liquor license, and transportation businesses. And here on the next slide, I have the proposed fee schedule. So the way that I came up with those fees is I calculated the average annual inflation rate for the past 20 years, and it is 2.46. So as a result, we are recommending increasing the license fees by 2% for each year for the last 20 years. And also we want to incorporate a tiers schedule for retail license or retail merchants. So that way we can still continue to support small businesses. And also we here have a new license type, which is the cottage food operation and the mobile vendor. There are 350. While doing the research, other cities have their mobile vendor licenses higher than the restaurants because they have less overhead costs. They can change location very easily, whereas a fixed location you cannot change. So they want to provide a plain level fee for everyone so that they can succeed. And the prices range from $250 to $500. So that's why we're recommending $350 for the mobile vendor and the cottage food operations. And also we want to include an application fee of $25, a building inspection fee of $25, and a foreign inspection of $40. And here I have a comparison of how many licenses we currently have. For example, we have 21 mobile vendors. Liquor license, we have 22. And that shows you the new license fee that they will be paying if this proposed schedule gets passed. For the retail, we currently have 370 licenses. And on the bottom of it, it shows you the breakdown. So we will have 175 licenses that will be still paying $100. Then 135 licenses that will go up to 150. And then 35 that will go to $200, and only 25 will go to $300. And on the right, I have you charts of how much revenue we are currently making from the current fees and what will be the possible revenue if we pass this new schedule. And finally, I have a list of other cities compared to our city license fee. So we currently only charge $100, and so we're almost at the bottom of the list. And if with the proposed fee schedule, we will be at 190. We're going to be just $10 above Somerton. And this fee will include the application fee, building inspection fee, foreign inspection, and the business license. And that concludes my presentation. I don't know if you have any questions, comments?
I have a couple. I can do it together, so give everybody an opportunity. Okay. Yes, sorry. Okay, I'm going to do it together. Okay, first, do you have any idea how many cottage industry we have in town, more or less?
I wouldn't be able to give you a number. They have to register with the state. And as far as there are registered, about five. But I'm pretty sure there are more that are not registered that are making sales from their homes. So we will have to get to them to know which is the process that they have to follow so that way they can be under this program. But only register with the state is about five.
And how often are you going to revisit? You're not going to wait 20 years, right? Every five years?
No, no. Every five years, yes.
Every five years, okay. And the last one, when are these new fees going to start?
So.
If passes.
If passes, we will have to do a notice of intent. Then we will have to wait 60 days for that public hearing. And then after that public hearing, if passed, it will have to be 30 days after. So about three months.
And you're going to let the public know these new fees?
Yeah, definitely. We will reach out to the stakeholders that currently have a business license fee with us or business license with us of these new changes as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the council?
Yes, Mayor. Just one question. Is there a reason why we waited 20 years to increase those fees or to revise those?
I wouldn't be so sure of that. But I know there were the fees. Nobody wanted to go ahead and update them, I believe. Okay, so we want to be proactive and start updating our fees that have very much time without being updated.
Do you know how often the other cities in the state revise these fees?
So they do about every five years. I did reach out to Somerton and Yuma, and they haven't updated their fees for a while too. So it's not a common practice for Somerton or Yuma to revise them. But we are with these fees for 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes. He answered my question. Okay, anybody else? Okay, well, none. Great presentation. It was about time. I know from a fact in the two and a half years that I've been here, you have done other things to try to be at the same level that other cities. Thank you for being so proactive. It needed to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two B, presentation followed by discussion on any and all matters regarding the City of San Luis final draft subdivision regulations. Juan Leal Rubio, Assistant Director of Development Services.
Ms. Clerk, I'm going to declare a conflict. It's obvious that I have a direct conflict, so you're not going to have any questions from me. I hope that anybody that has questions, this is their opportunity from council and members of the public. So I do have a conflict, I'm not going to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya, for that presentation. Councilmembers, I have a short presentation for you. There we go. Thank you, Sonya. Again, my name is Juan Leal Rubio. I'm the Assistant Director for Development Services. And what we have here tonight is the presentation and discussion with the council regarding the City of San Luis final draft subdivision regulations. And the intent here is to gather input, address any concerns, and ensure transparency in the regulatory process. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the current subdivision regulations are originally based on the Yuma County's 1992 regulations, which were adopted in May of 2002. The proposed update aims to align with state statute and current infrastructure needs as well as supporting smarter growth, improved infrastructure, and better community planning. I have a timeline of what it's taken to get here tonight. Even before January 2025, the draft had undergone extensive review by legal counsel. So what we have here tonight is a draft that's been reviewed by legal counsel, reviewed by stakeholders, by staff. So we have a good document in front of you. So on January 30th, that is when we posted the final draft on the city's website. On February 6th of this year, we released a document to the stakeholders. The stakeholders being the major developers in the City of San Luis, including engineers and others. We also emailed the document to the PNC Commission members on February 11th. On March 11th, we had our regular PNC Commission meeting where we presented the document to the commission. Then on the 13th, two days later, we had our first stakeholders' meetings and inviting also citizens of the City of San Luis. And there were several items that came up. So we have to go back to the drawing board to address the stakeholders' concerns. Hopefully, we did a good job. We came back July 10th with another meeting with the stakeholders. We addressed their comments, their concerns. And most of the items were addressed in the document that you have here in front of you tonight. So that's why we're here, giving you the work session and the presentation of this document. We hope to take this to the commission on August 12th for, as a public hearing, discussion, and a recommendation for approval from the staff. And hopefully be back with you on September 10th for the regular city council meeting for approval and adoption. And if the council recommends approval at that time, there would be a 30-day referendum period. So hopefully this document would be ready October 10th. So what I did here is I created a table that shows the top 20 differences between the old regs and the new regs. One of the most important things to note here is that the old subdivision regulations, what we currently have, it actually was based on a county regulations. So Title 11 regulates counties' state statute. So we actually aligned it with Title IX, which actually pertains to cities and towns. So that's one of the biggest things that you'll see. It aligns with cities and towns per state statute. The document is also, it improves clarity, it's more readable, it has a better structure for regulating the document, it has more defined street classifications. I'm not going to go over all these, but it improves clarity for developers. It allows for phased development. And it has, it's more specific zoning enforcement, ensures more road safety and capacity planning. We actually added more oversight on land divisions. We also included, even though USPS is not delivering mail, hopefully someday it will. But we did add verbiage here to ensure that, you know, when that time comes, the document will require that developers comply with cluster mailbox installations. So in general, this here shows the correspondence and comments that we see from the general public. These are just comments in general, nothing really needed to be addressed with the exception of George Amaya, who is a planning and zoning commissioner. He did provide a, he did a thorough review of the document. He redlined it. He actually pointed out several inconsistencies and typos. So we actually addressed all his comments. The document that you have in front of you actually did address all of George Amaya's comments. So that's, took care of all that. I do want to mention that there's a couple of things that we would like you to look at. Section 17.1015F, which reads, pursuant to the authority of ARS 9243B, streets adjacent to the property to be subdivided shall be required to be developed. No half-streets will be accepted. Where there exists a dedicated or platted street adjacent to the property to be subdivided, the other half being the minimum width to meet this chapter and the public works center shall be platted and fully improved. So what staff is recommending is that we eliminate the second sentence and just leave pursuant to the authority of ARS 9243B, streets adjacent to the properties to be subdivided shall be required to be developed. No half-streets will be accepted, period. So what that does is that eliminates and, you know, it avoids confusion and leaves less room for interpretation. Any deviation from this requirement could actually be handled through the approval of modification. So that's another thing. The current regulation doesn't have room for modifications. Now we added that, so anytime the developer believes that. I'll give you a really good example. Let's say that a developer is building a subdivision and one of the perimeter roads is, the adjacent property is owned by the federal government or state government, which who knows when that's going to be developed? Or let's say that the topography, maybe there's a canal, maybe it's by a hillside, or maybe that makes it very difficult or maybe even not able to improve that perimeter road. So under this modification, they could request a modification to remove that requirement for a full road improvement. So that helps with that. The modifications section would help with something like that. And also, if you look at section 17.25.60. No, I do not. We can make copies? Can we make copies prior to council? No, this was not included.
Copy of that? I can make it very quick. And since we have a little break in between, I do, once Juan has completed his presentation, we did tell the public during the stakeholder meetings that they would have the ability to come and ask questions or if they felt very strong in a specific area that they would be allowed to come in and talk to you on the matter.
I have a question about the roads. You had said so the developer has to pay for the full road. What if, like you said, the example that you stated was the other side of the road belongs to the state, and that's where you guys would make the modifications? But if the other side of the road, say, I'll give you an example, like Comite, if they have a road that they're building, the other side of the road's not theirs, it belongs to another property owner, do they have to develop that road for that other property owner? Or does that property owner have to give up the?
The councilmember Rosales, that's a good question. The developer would be required to do a full road improvement. However, if there's a challenging situation and they can't, for whatever reason, the modifications section, that would give them the opportunity to submit for a modification. And ultimately, it would be up to council whether to approve or not with a recommendation from staff.
Okay.
So that's essentially it. Do you have any questions, comments for staff?
Another thing for the block walls, I was there for that meeting. What did you guys end up this?
We eliminated that.
They eliminated that? Okay.
Is there anybody from the public that might be interested in? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name's Elizabeth Carpenter. I'm with Von Verdi Partners, and we develop out in the east side of San Luis. I really appreciate the staff meeting with us on two separate occasions and going over in detail all of the changes that they were proposing. There are a couple areas that we have reservations about, probably as a group of the developers. Most of us were not in agreement with it. One is the, one thing we'd like to see is if there's a way to come back to 5,000 square foot lots. Somerton has that. And I know that it does help make some of the properties more affordable. So we'd like to see that added in. The road width is also an issue. They've increased the road widths within the subdivision to 52 feet. It was 50, and we'd like to see that go back to what it was before because not only does it cost a developer more to put it in, which is also eventually passed on to the consumer, but then the maintenance for the road is left up to the city. And so that is something that needs to be, we feel needs to be revisited. Same thing with arterial roads and major roads and minor roads. I mean, it went from 100 to 110, from 80 to 100. And those things we'd like to have council reconsider. The other thing, and I think they reversed this, and I don't have my notes in front of me, but they had gone from four-foot sidewalks to five-foot sidewalks. But I think you guys decided to keep it at four, correct? Okay. We do have a big issue with the half-street requirement that the other half be put in. You know, they said that we can do a, you know, come in for a modification when it is backed up to either state land or federal land. But, you know, what if it's against farmland that might not ever be developed? What if it's against property that the, you know, a landowner does not have the capability to pay for their half of the road at this time? And so the developer is having to fund that money upfront, and that's expensive, and get a payback agreement. And that payback agreement, they don't know if it's going to be paid back. It might never be paid back. So I think that, you know, I've seen roads throughout all of my career, a lot of half-roads. And I don't ever find that it's been a big issue. So I can, off the top of my head, think of one that's in the City of Yuma that's between, I think it's B and C on 28th Street. It's been a half-road for a long time because it's farmland on the other side. And I don't know of any issues that they've had with that road. Also, the other thing that we would like addressed is the two-year requirement. Every other municipality in Yuma County only has a requirement for assurances and the warranty to be one year. I was present during the time that they increased it to the two-year, and it was because of one contractor that probably didn't perform up to the standards. And it affected all of us down the road to where we have to have that, the assurance is posted for two years. So that means that there's money that we can't use, you know, during that time period that probably could be put into a new project. So I'm sure that the other people that are present that worked on this issue can remember some of the other issues that we had. But I would really appreciate the council looking at some of those issues and seeing what we could do to compromise. Thank you. Any questions?
For the road widening that you guys did and the change, what are they doing in the City of Yuma for those regulations? What's the width of the roads, the difference between us and them?
I think right now the city is 48.
48?
Yeah, I believe so.
And right now we're at 52?
And we're at 52. That's within the subdivision. Yeah. I just remembered one other issue is the manholes. The manholes, certain manholes, we don't have a problem with them. And I am not any expert on this. So somebody smarter than me is going to have to speak to this issue. But I know that the manholes that are within the subdivision are very, very expensive. And that's another issue that we'd also like this council to consider. So. Thank you.
Just to, some of the items that Elizabeth brought up. Oh, I'm sorry.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mark Concha. Trabajo para Radio Construction. Como la señora Elizabeth Carpenter, este trajo dos, bueno, más de dos problemas. Nosotros estamos de acuerdo con varios de los que ella mencionó. Principalmente con lo que viene siendo el tiempo de garantía o de assurance que necesitamos poner una vez que se hace una subdivisión. Mayormente es porque la Ciudad de San Luis en todo el Condado de Yuma es la única que pide dos años de assurance. Lo que viene siendo el condado, la Ciudad de Yuma, Somerton solamente piden un año. Incluso Yuma, la Ciudad de Yuma, que varios de los detalles que tenemos para la construcción de la subdivisión se han agarrado de ellos. Si está la subdivisión bien, no ha creado ningún problema. Después de los seis meses empiezan a revisar. Y si no han encontrado ningún problema, lo quita. Eso nos pasó en una de las divisiones que construimos y no tuvimos ningún problema. Actualmente también Yuma County, tenemos un año, bueno, tenemos poquito menos de un año año que se construyó lo que es una subdivisión, y ya están mirando la forma de cómo hacen los releases assurance para lo que viene siendo a principios del año, que sería solamente un año lo que, lo que duraría la assurance que necesitamos poner. El otro problema que tenemos es con lo que viene siendo half trees. En una de las juntas que tuvimos, se acordó que solamente se iban a poner lo que viene siendo los dos, los dos caminos, que es el de ida y vuelta, más lo que es el espacio para estacionarnos. Y otra vez volvemos a lo mismo, a que no quieren lo que viene siendo half trees. Este, se me hace un poco de mal gusto que se llegue a un acuerdo cuando está la discusión, y otra vez volvamos otra vez a lo mismo, a lo que viene siendo solamente escucharnos en el momento y hacer, a final de cuenta, lo que ustedes gustan. Honestamente, estamos trabajando, no estamos pidiendo ningún tipo de lo que viene siendo privilegios ni nada, simplemente que se aplique las mismas reglas. Y si, nos basamos mucho en lo que es la ciudad de Yuma o en el condado, ¿por qué en esto nos podemos basar igualmente? Este, es una de las cosas que, que se me hace de mal gusto que nos llamen para hacer lo que viene siendo, escuchar nuestros comentarios, pero pues, no se llevan, no se toman en cuenta. La otra cosa que mencionaba la señora Carpenter, es lo que viene siendo los menjos. Los menjos, sí estamos de acuerdo que hay ciertos que tienen que ser de polímero, pero hay ciertos que no, no hay necesidad de ese gasto. Estás hablando que el gasto promedio de, del de concreto al de polímero sí se extiende bastante, a veces el doble o el triple, porque es algo muy caro. Se entiende que se pongan en calles principales o arterias principales de las subdivisiones o de la ciudad, pero adentro de la subdivisión donde es mínimo lo que viene siendo el uso que se da, y que, volvemos a lo mismo, la ciudad de Yuma, lo que es el condado, lo que es Somerton, usan lo que viene siendo los menjos de concreto, ¿por qué nosotros no podemos seguir lo mismo? Porque se tiene que gastar exageradamente y aumentar lo que viene siendo el costo de desarrollo de las subdivisiones. Yo pienso que si agarramos ciertas cosas de las demás ciudades, no solamente debemos de agarrar lo que nos conviene, sino ser un poco más equitativo y hacer a todo un poco más justo y estándar con los demás. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Concha. Some of the items that were brought up regarding, for example, the minimum square foot lot, 5,000 square foot lots, that's actually not addressed in the subdivision regulation, that's something that is part of the zoning code. So that's, that's not part of the subdivision regulation. As far as modifications, the section, Section 17.1013 reads modifications, whenever subdivision design standards or improvement standards are requested to be modified or not constructed, the appropriate technical registrant shall, and it has the steps. So it does read, whenever subdivision design standards or improvement standards are requested to be modified. So it doesn't really say, you know, as far as who owns the adjoining parcel, whether it's federal government, state government, or it's farmland. I mean, this gives the opportunity to the developer, if they believe it's justifiable, and if, you know, staff also agrees with a, that a modification would, will actually work out, and council approves that, so they could actually apply for modification regardless of who owns the adjoining property. Of course, you know, if it's the same owner, same developer, staff would more than likely not recommend approval modification. But ultimately, it's up to staff. As far as the other items, assurances, a road width, polymer manholes, that's something maybe could be best answered by Elohe.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So on, I can start with the polymer manholes. So all the polymer manholes, they do have an additional cost. We knew it when this requirement was implemented. Back then, we thought that the actual cost of the manhole was 25, 30% additional. We really haven't done analysis lately, what's the difference in costing just concrete with T-lock liner versus polymer. But the big difference from the, from the owner's side is that the polymer manholes come with a 50-year warranty. They really are corrosion resistant, so we, they go in, and we sort of forget about them. You know, there's really no worry on the, on the duration or the life cycle of those manholes, different than other products, which are the concrete manholes with T-lock liner. Like, for example, not so long ago, we brought a project to council to rehabilitate, I think, a close to 20 manholes along Cesar Chavez, that we were getting ready for the big mining. And on those manholes, we're spending about, close to a million and a half on just repairs and rehabbing. If they would have been polymer, you know, they would have been in pristine condition. So it is, we're aware, there is additional cost. However, I think just with the amount of issues that we've had with, in the sewer collection system, staff still recommends continuing with that recommendation of requiring polymer manholes. There is, just to cover the areas where other cities only require the polymer manholes on main lines, like collectors. We see that, even in residential areas, when it comes to repairing those manholes or replacing, it still gets very expensive. Close to about a year ago, we came to council as well, and we replaced five manholes that are not in a main trunk line, they were pretty much collecting sewer from one subdivision, and we spent close to $50,000 to $60,000 each to replace. There was nothing around there, it was, there was no walls, no streets. Well, one was near walls, and it was still very expensive. So if there would have been polymer manholes, we wouldn't have to have done that work. So it is expensive upfront, we agree. It's just we tend to the city's best interest, long-term. We still think it's the best solution.
Mr. Vera, may I, madam, mayor, may I comment? Thank you for the answer, I like it. I needed more information as far as why we chose those manholes. Quality is best, so that it lasts longer. I just have a question, the concrete manholes, do you know how long those last?
So in theory, if they were installed perfectly, they would last, I would say, 25, 35 years, maybe even longer. But many times, unfortunately, many times, there's too many variables that can go wrong, even the little hole in the liner, and the life expectancy on those manholes really is reduced. And that's sort of what we saw on some of these, for example, on Cesar Chavez Boulevard, we inspected all the manholes, and not all of them were needing like replacement or like an insert, which we did polymer inserts. Some of them were in good condition, but it goes back to the installation. If they're installed perfectly, you can have a decent life out of them, but it's tough to install them perfectly. That's sort of what we've seen. Okay.
Elohe, I have a question. When the city's replacing those manholes, which one are, we are replacing with, concrete or polymer?
No, we're replacing, since we, in 2016, when we adopted the current standards, one of the requirements is that it's polymer manholes. So everything that we do becomes polymer in public right away. If somebody wants to do something private, it's up to them to do concrete. But for example, when it's something going new, it's polymer. If it's a repair, some of the options that we look at, it could be epoxy coating, or we do a polymer manhole insert, which pretty much falls inside the manhole between the liner and the gases, and then we end up with a polymer product.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the assurances. Why is it that we asked for two years? What's, why was the recommendation? Because I know we always go based off county and city of Yuma, but you guys also get studies from outside the county, so do other cities require two-years' assurances?
So the, so a little bit history, what I saw, it was before my time, but the two-year, so there's two things, right? There's two-year warranty, and there's the assurances. So the way the subdivision regs is the assurances are posted, and then when the project's completed, 10% is withheld for the warranty period. So they're tied, but they're two different things. So on the warranty, at one point, city council, city staff believed that that was the best thing for the city. So it was made a requirement to have the two-year warranty. The benefits of a two-year warranty is that you might miss some issues between the first and the second year. Oh, I guess after the first year is complete and the end of the second year, there might be issues that you might not catch in the first year. That, how many items, how many issues, it's tough to say. However, it gives the city that additional benefit. So at this, at this point, we see the benefit on some recent projects, we saw some concrete work that needed repair between the first year and the second year. So if we would have had just one year, maybe we would have missed some of those issues. So whether the city wants to change it to one year, I guess it's an option. Other cities have one year. Registered contractors, for example, they have a two-year warranty requirement. So we're not the only ones, but again, it's sort of something that, is the city ready to reduce it to one year, it'll be more of a council decision? We think it's something that benefits us as far as not having to do the repairs ourselves, right? It goes back on the contractor or developer. Any questions on that? I'll move on to the assurances next.
Yeah, you're good, thank you.
Okay. On the assurances, the subdivision reads, the subdivision regs read that we need to get 100% of the assurances of the cost of the project, and then at the end of the project, or throughout the project, it gets released, and we only keep 10%. But then again, the 10% is kept for the warranty period. So that's how those two things are tied. Questions?
I'd like, also remind you that the polymer manholes are actually not part of the subdivision regulation, so whatever happens with those, it's not really, this document doesn't really affect that. That is a public works standard, so that's something that could probably be looked at if, you know, that document gets updated. And also, the, the topic of the road widths came up. We're actually not changing anything. I mean, during our last stakeholder meetings, we, we actually clarified that to the stakeholder, to the stakeholders, and there was no more discussion. So the table that you see is what we're actually requesting on the road width.
If nobody else has any questions, thank you so much. Great, great presentation. Item number 2C. Presentation followed by discussion on any and all matters regarding regulations establishing recreational amenities requirements and standards for new residential development. Jose Guzman, Director of Development Services.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. So based on council direction for staff to look into creating recreational amenities for new subdivisions, we hired J2 consultant to assist us on the process. They're a firm that has worked with different cities throughout the state, so they're really familiar with the, with the park amenities requirements. We have Shane here from J2, and he will give us an overview of the process and the methodology of the proposal on new regulations.
Mayor, council members, I'm Shane Hanneman with J2 Design. I'm a landscape architect. We are civil engineers and landscape architects that specialize in downtown redevelopment and in parks and recreation. So as Jose suggested, they asked J2 to come onboard and help to define goals for recreation and open space in residential land development. I worked with Jose, and I worked with Enhelica, and we, we identified what is going on, and the fact is that private developers are developing open space, and they're providing it to the city to manage. There are no regulations that determine what should be or what should not be in those amenities. So working with them, we identified four goals. And one of them is to make sure that we satisfy the recreational needs of the community. That would be reflecting the Parks and Rec master plan, and what the folks at the Parks and Rec Department identify as long-term needs. Secondly, long-term maintenance. We want to make sure that what is developed is something that is inherited by the city to manage, or to be maintained by the city, so we want to make sure that it's at a quality that is not going to be a long-term maintenance issue. Third is safety. We want to make sure that what is designed accommodates the latest ADA guidelines and safety guidelines for playgrounds. All of that, we want to wrap up and make sure that it balances a public design requirement without being an insane burden cost-wise. So we're trying to moderate cost while providing a public facility that the private development supplies to the city to manage. So how do we reach those goals? We worked with the city to develop a checklist of required amenities for various park elements. What we did was we audited other municipalities throughout the state, and based upon J2's experience throughout the state with what is commonly found in different-sized parks. An example for the parks, or the open spaces in your residential land development varies from two to three, three to four, four to five, and five to five and a half. You're not going to get much larger than that in the developments that you currently have. We look at long-term maintenance. Public parks are heavily used facilities, and therefore have to have a little bit more of a robust response, i.e., you don't want to pick a bench that's going to wear out in two to three years, because your long-term costs are going to end up exceeding what you would save in the beginning. I talked a little bit about safety, so because it's a public facility, safety and liability are an ongoing issue, and that's something that we look to address in these recreation requirements. And then lastly, moderating costs. What we did was, we looked at other municipalities throughout the state and what they offered for those various-sized parks. What we did was, in working with Enhelica and Jose and this audit, we developed a checklist of amenities that are commonly found in open spaces of equivalent size. So what we did was we, the result is, we provided a required list of amenities based upon not only the feedback from city staff, but also what was commonly occurring throughout the state. And then each park, no matter what size, we tried to basically balance the cost, no matter if it was a two-to-three acre park or a four-to-five acre park, the cost per acre would be relatively close to equivalent. So a larger park is going to have more amenities, but we didn't want to overburden a larger park by being more expensive, if that makes any sense. So it provides the developer with flexibility that no matter what size that open space ends up, ends up being, that it's not going to be a burden to cost. So what we have provided is what we see as a balance between those four goals without, based upon our experience, overburdening costs. What we have developed falls actually a little bit below the mean of what we see in terms of a public sector offering of open space recreation. So what you see here in the recreation guidelines that we provided actually moderates the cost a little bit better than the mean, based upon our experience. So the guy, I'm not going to go, it's a 40-some-page document, I'm not going to go into detail on it, but I'm going to tell you generally what's within the document, and if you have any questions, I'm available to talk in more detail about it.
Excuse me, we've got 12 minutes left, and we have a council meeting right at 6:00. So can you speed it up?
I will speed it right up. I'm happy to do that for you.
Thank you.
So we basically have five sections. One is the submittal procedures for residential land development, meaning they have to go through staff to have what the open space requirements are to make sure that they've satisfied it. Two, a general overview, which basically says you have to accommodate these safety guidelines. Two, a general overview, which basically says you have to accommodate these safety guidelines. Site amenities, that will say the required amenities within these various park sizes. And then site furnishings, it actually gives vendors that we have worked with and that the city has worked with in the past, that it's a catalog for the, for the developers to choose from. And then it also gives the requirements for each park size, two to two and a half, or I'm sorry, two to three, three to four, four to five, and five to five and a half. There you go. How about that? I summarized as quickly as I possibly could. So with that, I've got a bunch of information, but given the time, I'll, I'll yield back and if there's any questions.
Questions, comments from council, please. This is the time. Steph? Jose, you're good? Thank you.
Mayor, council members, unless there's any changes that council would like to see, we'll proceed with the adoption process, which includes public hearings and gives the opportunity to developers to comment or ask any questions on that item.
Is there anything that you can show us on the two choices just for the people to see what you're proposing? Because we're in the dark.
It's a whole document that is attached to the agenda. It's the recreational amenities draft. Like Shane mentioned, it's a 47-page document, but it gives examples of the amenities and the, the different playgrounds or... So what we're trying to do is do an average of, based on the, on the cities that were researched, not going too high or too low, just an average of the amenities that we see throughout the state.
Okay. Anybody else?
So your process moving forward, Jose, is for you to do public meetings or...?
Yeah, we will have public hearings and we'll invite stakeholders for comments or questions.
I just think that we might need a little bit more time as a council to decide on whether we're going to move forward with the two-year requirement, the one-year requirement or with the roads that they were brought up. Or when are we going to decide that? Is it, has to be decided before you meet with the public or...?
This, this item is on the recreational amenities.
Okay.
The subdivision that I presented before is going to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a public hearing, and then come back to council on September 10, I believe, for adoption. And before the adoption, council can make any changes.
When we discuss it in the council meeting?
Yeah.
Changes can be made? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, please. It's okay. We've got eight minutes to go.
Yeah. Seven. I've seen this document very briefly and I just want to tell the consultants that we don't have the budget of Scottsdale, Phoenix, Tucson. They need to look at the communities that are our size, that have the budget within the city and the budget of the, and the income of the, of the residents in the city. I am all for providing amenities. I have absolutely no problem with that. I, I just want them to look at how it's going to be, how it's going to, how it's going to be maintained, what kind of budget you have for the maintenance of it ongoing. Because the worst thing is to have a subdivision and you put in this nice, I mean, that looks beautiful up there right now, right? And we put it in the first day and then six months later, it can't be maintained and that's an issue. So when they're looking at these amenities, not only the cost of the amenities, but further down the road, and keep in mind our city.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, let's wrap it up and let's take a six-minute break so we can come back to the regular council meeting. Thank you, everyone.